Five under unfinished business and item number one under new business until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Postpone number five under unfinished and number one under new business.
Correct.
Okay, then we have a second for Mr. Mitchell. Any further? If not, all in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moves us down to approval of the minutes for February the 25th, 2013.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, changes, deletions, additions, corrections, any of the above? Okay, if not, all in favor of accepting February 25th, 2013 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next on the agenda is a presentation, the City of Distinction Award, Mr. Dan Lovelady and Mr. Nathan Rutledge. Gentlemen, come on up to the speaker, to the microphone.
Evening.
How you doing?
Hi, Dr. B., just wanted to pass these out real quick.
Thank you, sir.
I hadn't seen them.
Turn them out a little, a little title.
We're excited to have the opportunity to be here tonight.
Can understand.
Go ahead.
Sorry, hang on a second.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
My name's Nathan Rutledge, and I'm a Director of Public Finance at Cruising Associates, and here with me is Dan Lovelady, who also works in, at Cruising Associates, and actually is a financial advisor for Arkansas School Districts. And we're excited that Eureka Springs is actually a client of ours, so we're excited specifically tonight to be here to present a city that we work with, with an award. The, for those of you that don't know, Arkansas Business has tried over the past couple of years to come up with ways to set apart those cities and reward them with things that they're doing to stand out. Those can be any, any number of things, but they're just trying to figure out a way to show that cities around Arkansas are doing magnificent things, and they've had awards in the past for Business of the Year, CFO of the Year, so this is a way for them to reward those cities that are standing out and making a difference. Then I passed out this insert, Arkansas Business circulated this the end of last year, and it was in their article, and they do a great job putting it together. And just so you know why I'm here, Cruising Associates is an investment banking firm at Little Rock, and we do public finance, which just means we're a bank for cities and counties and public utilities or school districts through bond issues. And so many of the, the cities in here we work with, so we're excited since Dan works with Eureka Springs School District. And so our connection is when Eureka, when Arkansas Business decided to go forward with this, we thought it was a great way for us to partner with them, help support the award, and help support the cities of Arkansas that are standing out that we're lucky enough to call customers. And if you'll flip two pages over in your pamphlet, which Arkansas Business has done a great job with, you'll see a big dark page, and on the right side you'll see the different categories. We've got City of Distinction Award winners in six categories: workforce development, Main Street preservation, quality of life, green initiatives, technology, and tourism development. And I don't know if anybody else is on there, didn't quite look, but I don't think there would at least be any more than you, but Eureka Springs has gotten three awards this year, so I would say somebody has done something right, and I, I would presume it's probably the whole community. If you'll flip over to page 11, we'll look at the first award that Eureka Springs has Page 11 reads, "Main Street Preservation Honorable Mission Under 5,000, the City of Eureka Springs." The title there is "Promoting and Maintaining Past: Part of the Playbook." And you'll see there that Eureka Springs is National Tourist Destination, which I'm sure you all know, and has actually been upgraded to National Significance on the National Register of Historic Places. One of the things that they do like to point out, not only to reward cities for these ways of, of standing out, but also to show other cities how Eureka Springs or some other city might be doing something, whether it's a program you've pushed or a commission you've created to, to help motivate downtown development. And so here you can see they've pointed out that collaboration, collaboration of the public, nonprofit, and private sectors has all been a part of this, and I think that's something that you should be proud of, and Arkansas Business is proud of, and especially proud to distribute around the state of Arkansas for people to see. Now, before I keep you too long, we'll go to page 21, and we'll look at your second award. It's for Green Initiatives, winner, under 5,000, Eureka Springs, and the title reads "Trees at Root of Cities Conservation Initiatives." And if I wanted to, to point out everything, I probably would miss a few things. There's quite a, quite a few reasons why Eureka Springs has won a Green Initiative Award. Just a few would be 1,800 acres of parks, they focus on trees and main, maintenance of the trees around the city, focus on walking, motorized trolleys, the farmer's market has a solar-powered generator, they recycling, the first city in Arkansas, in Arkansas to have curbside recycling, which is, is a big thing, there's still plenty of cities that need to get on that. Over $260,000 in grants that you all have worked hard to get, that doesn't cost your citizens any money, and we think that's something to be rewarded. Streetlights, windows, it kind of just keeps going on and on. Obviously, the city has done more than just a basic, let's try to be green, but gone the extra mile. If you'll flip over to page 29, we'll look at your final award. Tourism, winner, under 5,000, Eureka Springs, limited size, unlimited opportunities for visitors. And I think I've heard someone earlier speak to, to 2 million visitors a year, and I don't know what number is right. Here we've got 2,200 residents and over 800 travelers through Eureka Springs every year, regardless of the number. I think both of those are pretty magnificent for a, a small community in Arkansas. And there's also plenty of things here to look at and point out, but one of the things is the new must-see would be the Queen Anne Mansion House Museum, which I'm sure you all proud of, and as well as many other things around the community. So on behalf of Cruising Associates and Arkansas Business, we're excited to present you all with your hard work with three different awards. I know at the Municipal League, Mayor, they gave you all something to set on your shelves. We've tried to make it a point to go to each community and make sure that everyone in your community knows about the awards that you've won as well, and we've got something to hang on the wall, so you'll kind of have double awards to put up, so make sure everyone sees it. So thanks for giving us the opportunity to be here, and we're excited to present you with all, with three awards this year.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Ms. Glenna Booth, who has spearheaded all the grants and all the hard work that's went into these, so I don't want to leave her out. And Mike Bishop from our chamber also, I'm sorry. I'm sorry? Those will be good, right there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, y'all.
Say flat back.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Something's for Glenn.
Oh, yeah. Before we get too far along, before we get into Commission Committee reports, I'd like to take this opportunity to tell the public that we lost one of our longtime public employees, Manny Ortiz, passed away Friday night. Manny was, he's been one of our guys here for at least 18 years that I can remember. Sweetest guy you ever know. He will definitely be missed by those who get tickets and those who don't get tickets. He kind of made him not care, one way or the other. So we'll take just a minute and remember Manny for just, just a little bit, just a quiet spell. Thank you. All right. Thank you. We miss you, Manny. Thank you. All right, let's get on with our business. Commission Committee Authority reports dispired terms. First up would be Planning, Beverly's here, so we'll let her get started.
Just want to tell you all that tomorrow the Planning Commission has a setback and lot variance public hearing for 37 Mountain Street, so if you're interested in that or you want to speak on that, the public hearing is tomorrow at 6 o'clock, and there is a real need for commissioners on the Planning Commission. The last time that you had a meeting, I asked that you would consider putting it on your agenda to have our Planning Commission be made up like the state code says, instead of what our city code says, which would allow a couple of members to be from other commissions or work for the city. And if you did not put that on your agenda because you did not think that a good idea, I respect that. If you did not put that on your agenda because it was an oversight, I just remind you. Thanks.
In your package, you should also have a, an application for position number six on planning from Mr. Ed Lesswig. I'd like to submit his name for nomination. Ms. Snyder.
In view of the situation with planning and them needing commissioners so badly after the last meeting, they couldn't hold it because they didn't have a quorum, since Ed Lesswig has sat on the Planning Commission quite a number of years, he knows his job, he knows the business of planning, all of us know him, the one or two maybe that don't, will learn to know him really fast. I would like to change our rules, and instead of waiting two weeks since we all know him, I would like to go ahead and approve him tonight so he can be at his first meeting tomorrow, especially in view of the variance that they have.
Second that.
Any discussion? Not? Yes, sir.
Ditto exactly what Mickey has said. Ed Lesswig is, is, has been an excellent participant.
Mr. McCollum.
Can we do that?
Sure. Yeah, true rules.
Okay. I'm just making sure we're not stepping on any toes.
Not that I know what. So the council probably need to first go ahead and approve the, the nomination.
I move to approve the nomination of Ed Lesswig for planning.
Second. I think David seconded it. Okay. Does the council want to go ahead and vote tonight? Is that unanimous? Okay.
You really should take the roll call on the issue of whether to change your rule.
Okay. We can do that. We have that ability.
So let's have a motion to that effect. I make a motion that we change the rule tonight and approve Ed Lesswig foregoing the two-week notice.
Second.
De Perky pile.
Yes.
Joyce Keller.
Yes.
David Mitchell.
Yes.
Terry McLown.
Yes.
James DeVito.
Yes.
Mickey Snyder.
Yes.
Six on changing.
Okay. Next, next vote will be on Mr. Ed Lesswig for position number six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Lesswig, welcome aboard, sir. Okay. That moves us to CAPC through the cemetery. I don't have any reports, which brings us next to public comments. And we have Ms. Lanny Ballantyne on public comments. Mr. Adamson was first, but he crossed his name out.
Come on up.
Hi again. I know you missed me. Next time I'll try to stay away a little bit. During the last city council meeting, during the council, comments portion of the meeting, one of the city councilmen stated that it was illegal, mean and nasty, and illegal for residents to bang pots and pans together, even if it is on their own stupid property. I've pored over the code books, I've looked through the state statute book, I can't find anywhere that it says it's illegal to bang pots and pans together on your own stupid property, or even if it's intelligent property, I couldn't find any regulations against that either. And so I was wondering if perhaps the mayor or any of the other council members might have the information where it says that banging pots and pans together on your own stupid property is illegal. If nobody is able to come up with that information, then I would suggest that we have council members sitting at this table who are disseminating incorrect information, and it sounds something to me like, oh, government by intimidation. So I just wanted to point that out to the people that you might not always believe, be able to believe what comes out of this table as to what's legal, what's illegal, people may be making it up off the cuff. I'm not sure, but it seems to me that perhaps it is that way. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the viewing public. Also, as far as adding a discussion of the taxis at, during the agenda setting of this meeting, when you've known about it for at least two weeks and probably much, much longer than that was, in my opinion, that was pretty tacky. It should have been on there so people could know you were going to talk about that. That's been a big issue in past councils, people adding things to the agenda at the last minute. It's been very frowned upon, and yet it goes on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you. Number three was Lynn Sterling, names being crossed off, leaves number four, Mr. Blaine Tabo, and I hope I said the name right.
What was the people doing on their front lawn? Hundreds of them hanging around some pans together this morning.
And number five is Pat Matsukas.
I figured as long as I was out for the evening, I'd be out for the evening. Pat Matsukas, 5 Mountain. Outdoor, the outdoor lighting thing, you know, I've really been happy in the last couple of years that we've decided to lower the lighting and do better lighting, and now all of a sudden I hear we want to increase the lighting again. If that's true, I hope it's not. I hope we're, we're doing better than that. Number two, I know you postponed the salary thing, but as long as I'm here, I would be shocked to see the mayor's salary and council salaries pass this table without it going to a vote of the people, so if you really believe that this should happen, I would hope that you would put it on a ballot so we could all vote on it in a general election and not make me have to carry a petition. I would really like not to do that. So thank you for that. The other thing I'm looking at, and the salary thing is absurd. Y'all, when, when everybody runs for these jobs, they all know what the prices are and what the monies are, and should, should go accordingly. This is not, we are not BMW, we are not Chase, we are not Manhattan, we don't have that kind of money. Every time I turn around, I see this money thing, this money pit happening, like somehow we're made of money. It's shocking to me, because I have not seen our revenues go up, even though the CAPC says we're up 16 percent. That barely is people raising their food costs to cover the sales tax. That's not an increase in business. I'm looking at, you know, the parking, and let me go on to the parking thing while we're here. I've had three people, I've only been back at work one half-day in a friend's shop where I've worked for 12, 13 years, and I cannot tell you that I had people walk in and say to me, I now have to pay $10 or $20 for this ticket. We are a tourist-based town. Our own master plan said, get rid of paid parking. We have got to be in competition with Bentonville. You talk about Crystal Bridges, you talk about all these other places. How can you be a tourist town and ask people to come here, and the first thing we do is take money out of their pocket? You can go to Colorado, you can go to the upper-scale places, they don't have this. Years ago, Bill Ruble, bless his heart, did a study to find out where the parking money went. The money that we take in for parking fines for the meters themselves, not the fines, but the meters themselves, that money is basically, it pays the salaries of the guys that go and write the tickets. So really, it's a wash, and I would rather have two guys out there greeting people, welcoming people to town, and being the best they can be to people than giving them tickets. It's a bad, it's, it's not a win-win for Eureka when people come here, and the first 20 minutes they hear, they get a stupid ticket. And I say this, I, you know, I carry quarters, I'll do whatever I have to do because this is my town, but as a tourist-based economy, of which I've been part of for over 30 years now, so clearly I love tourism, it's just sad that we keep doing this, and raising those ticket prices has not endeared us to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Number six was David Corles, crossed out, leaves number seven, Larry Evans.
My name's Larry Evans, native, and have always had my own business here in Eureka Springs, and has automotive work, welding, et cetera. I can remember when Fuzzy first came to town, and it wasn't long after he started working for me. Reliable, honest, go out of his way. When he worked for me, I would trust him with anything, and he never, ever let me down. And I know him as a person, and his integrity, and how he handles himself way better than I would be capable of doing. And I just wanted to throw my two cents in, I'm sorry I was late getting here. There's so many more things I could say, but I'm not a very good speaker, but I just want to throw my two cents in that I can't tell you anyone else that could do what he has done. At winter, getting around in snow and ice, and always does it. He's always out there. I don't know anyone else, as much as I've been around here, I go, I've always had a vehicle that would get around in this, and I'm usually out in it, he's right there, or hidden. Thank you.
That'll do for our public comments. Brings us into unfinished business, number one, Department of Commission, 2013 priorities, motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
We, I want to thank all the departments and commissions who submitted their priorities, and we have them now, and I think what we need to establish next is the process to take these priorities to the, after we've reviewed them ourself, obviously, and take them to the town hall meeting. So I don't know if it would be worthwhile to put them in some kind of a form so the public can see them. It's not that we're asking the public to, to vote on department or commission's priorities because they belong to the department or commission, and it's their accountability and responsibility to work on those, obviously with the support of council, and we would hope with the support of the citizens of this community, but it, so that the citizens can see what the various departments and commissions are working on, and then possibly even have space, maybe one through three or one through five, where the public could also write at the town hall meeting what they would consider to be the city's priorities. So unless anybody has anything else to add to the, to the process, I think that's where we're at right now, is, is moving the process of priorities to the town hall meeting and then back to us.
Mr. Perky Bell.
Do you think we ought to have, Mr. Mayor, a little workshop so we can kind of go through all these and maybe take the top priority from everybody's list?
Great.
And, 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 you know, I, I know there, there's, there's an issue that's probably going to come before council tonight, perhaps, or maybe it won't, I don't know, that, where we really need to, you know, look at some of our infrastructure and, and start addressing it. You think we should have a...
Great idea, great idea.
Okay.
Good whatever you guys say. Yes, sir.
In addition to that, then, once we have kind of narrowed the field, at least in what our eyes are before it's, it's laid out to the public, it ought to be published before the town hall meeting as well, so the community gets to look at it, and that way they can be prepared for their input whenever that town hall meeting does take effect.
And in that regard, I think, and Mr. DeVito has expressed this, we should probably push the town hall meeting back until we can get this workshop, we can get a priority list, and then we can get some notification to the public. And we have a little more time, but it's not necessary to go straight out there with this. We need to organize ourselves.
Do you all have a time in mind? Date?
For the workshop? For the workshop? Well, that's a good question. I opened my big mouth, didn't I?
What was the town hall meeting?
We were thinking first of April, but that's obviously moving.
I think the town hall meeting needs to be put back, so we could do in April, sometime in April to do the workshop, you know, prior to...
Well, that's, that's why you did the workshop instead of the town hall, since everybody was good for that day.
For that particular day, that's actually a good idea, I think.
Wow, again, you talk about that.
What was that day?
April 2nd.
April 2nd or 4th?
2nd.
2nd. What time was it, please? Anybody remember the time? Oh, 5, Diane's got her phone. 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM.
And now it won't be in the auditorium, obviously, so it'll probably be here if you let us know or somebody.
Should, should we move that time to 6:00? Would that be a better time for everybody? I mean...
For a workshop? Yeah, probably.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
6:00?
6:00 is good for me. I like 6:00.
Apparently it's 6:00 on April 2nd.
Do we have to do that as a motion, or do we just kind of do it?
Probably put it in the form of a motion, so we can have a...
Okay, I move that we have a workshop on April 2nd at 6:00 PM here in this room to discuss a prioritization list of the city's needs.
Second. Ms. Mickey, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. April 2nd, 6:00 PM, here. Okay, brings us to number two, town hall meeting. Mr. DeVito.
I think what comes out of that workshop is going to be set up the town hall meeting, so I defer this item till after that, or to, to the April 2nd meeting.
Motion to postpone. Second. May I say? Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. With this, number three, outdoor sales ordinance. It should be an untitled ordinance or unnumbered ordinance. And you should have a copy of it. Motion to discuss.
Motion, uh, motion discuss.
Second.
Second.
Floor's open.
Beverly's still here.
Yes.
Honestly, I don't remember where we're at with this, Beverly, to save this thing. You better come up here and help us.
This is what the Planning Commission sent to you as their recommendation. You agreed with the Planning Commission's recommendations, and you sent it to the city attorney to put in ordinance form, and he has put that in ordinance form, and it's come back to this table now. I would tell you, when we sent it, I wasn't sure about how to get the notification to the police department, but now it just says the person that obtains the permit has to forward a copy to the police department, so whoever gets the permit, it'll be up to them to, to let the police department know. So that takes the, the city clerk's department out of that loop, and that's it. I mean, you went over these things and discussed it at this table, and now it's just in ordinance form.
Mr. DeVito's got it.
I'd like to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Is there an extra copy of the ordinance?
It looks like this.
Thank you, Diane.
This number will be 2178. And ordinance amending chapter 4.44, outdoor sales of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of the Planning Commission's recommendations, and whereas the council believes that it is in the best interest of the city and its citizens, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, that the purpose section of ordinance 1020 is previously passed and approved as hereby adopted, and the code service, service... And the code service, service is directed to add it to the codification of this ordinance as if set out herein word for word. Section two, that the definition of outdoor rummage sales, sidewalk sales, yard sales, porch sales, outdoor auctions and garage sales is hereby amended as follows, by adding a comma between commercial and social and by removing the phrase, which are of a duration of not more than three consecutive calendar days. Section three, that subsection 4.4402B is hereby amended by adding the following sentence: Each person obtaining such a permit shall forward a copy of said permit to the police department within 24 hours of its issuance. Section four, that subsection 4.4402D is hereby amended to read as follows: No person or organization shall hold such sale regulated under this article at one specific address more than three times in a calendar year. A person or organization with a legitimate need to have one additional outdoor sale per year may apply to the planning commission for a permit to hold said additional sale. Said application shall be heard at the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting and a permit shall be issued on a showing of good cause by the applicant. Section five, that the following limitations shall be added to subsection 4.44.03. One, that the actual sale times are limited to beginning no earlier than 7:00 AM on each permitted sale date and ending no later than 7:00 PM of each permitted sale date. Two, that the setup and removal times of items for sale shall be no earlier than noon the day before the permitted sale date and no later than noon the day after the last permitted sale date. Section six, that all ordinances and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section seven, in the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance code section or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance code, code section or chapter shall remain ineffective.
Mr. DeVito.
I move to approve ordinance number 2178 on its first reading.
2nd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, what was your vote?
Hi.
What was your vote?
Yes.
Did, um, okay, are we, is there a discussion open on this or are we done with this?
Yes, there is now.
Okay, where, what?
I'm sorry.
There wouldn't be discussion on this and...
We didn't suspend the rules on it, did we?
Unless we go for the second reading and then there would be discussion at that point. The discussion was prior to the vote.
Okay, well, I was reading it and that slipped by me, so, okay, I'll wait till the second reading. I just have a question.
Okay, 6-0. That's it? Okay. All right, brings us to number four, ordinance 2174, utility allowance, second read. Mr. DeVito.
I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2174 on its reading by title only.
2nd.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We gotta, we gotta do the little call up, jump ahead of myself. Never gonna get that right.
Oh, yes, you will. James DeVito?
Yes.
Frankie Schneider?
Yes.
Joy Seller?
Yeah, yes.
Terry McLun?
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
Steve Herkypile?
Yes.
6-0?
Okay.
Ordinance 2174. An ordinance regarding location of utilities on all new construction.
Mr. DeVito.
I move to approve ordinance number 2174 on its second reading.
2nd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 26-0.
Well, if I'm not, if I don't hear a vote, I'm counting it as a, as an aye. So if, if anybody really wants to vote, no, I need to really hear you, okay? Please.
Got it.
Thanks. 6-0.
Okay. Is there discussion now? Brings us on to... We postpone number five onto number six, the accounting financial program discussion. Lonnie, you're up.
Move to discuss?
2nd.
Go ahead.
Okay, I went back and did a little homework and gave you the spreadsheets previously and kind of prepared a spreadsheet on the four packages that I, that I did analysis on to determine which one that I felt was the best for us. And so those are how they kind of came out and the approximate costs of each one. And of course, you can take a look at the package B, which is the one that we're asking that can be approved and purchased. There's an ordinance as a second part of this and that's to waive the requirements for competitive bidding for the purchase of this accounting computer software. And I guess I probably need to bring up the title of that just a little bit, but at any rate. Anyway, it's the body of it. I should have accounting computer software there instead of account computer software.
I think we can make that change.
But it goes into, and I took the emergency clause off, it's just a, an ordinance to waive the bidding requirement. And it goes into the purchase price, the three-year, three annual payments with no interest charge and the modules that we would be purchasing. And then it also includes, what the price includes, the data conversion, custom import, implementation, project management, software setup, onsite implementation and so forth, and the training and the travel expenses. And it also includes the first year of support, which in the second year and following will be, as it stands right now, $9,500. And there would be a, a clause in there that it couldn't increase more than the CPI in any given year after that, so, which is a little protection there for us. So at any rate, there's that. And then the third one is just a resolution that authorizes us to, to make the purchase. So hard to spend the money.
Mr. Mitchell?
A couple of questions, Lonnie.
Okay.
The criteria is great and I appreciate you putting in a spreadsheet and I appreciate you showing us other vendors in, in a, in a format that we can go across and look at. I also, in calling you the other day, I also understand you were not the only person looking at this. In fact, you had various other city employees, depending on the area, look at this computer system. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And then the second one was, on the conversion of the current data with, obviously you're looking at package B, did, have you ever found out how far back they'll go and convert this current data off this system to the new one? Is that three or five years back?
I believe, excuse me, I believe it's five years, but...
Thank you, okay.
But don't hold my feet to the fire on that.
Okay.
But we need some historical data and of course, we will, we will continue to have the da, the data that we have backed up so that we can bring it forward if we ever need it.
But, yeah, but the, the, one of the most important things to me on here is the fact that you are able to go into the systems, at least the more expensive ones, and actually write customized reports with data fields so as we need to be able to look at trended data, be it by the month or year-to-date or prior year-to-date or go back. If we want to trend things, then, then you can actually get us customized reports.
Right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And going back to your question about other city employees, of course, Yvonne Klein has been here for 12 years and, and all the people in my department and the various modules that they deal with. The Linda at Water Billing and everybody, and so it wasn't, wasn't just me, but I got a lot of input from a lot of other people.
One other question. On package C or D, did, did those vendors offer payment plans with no interest?
They did not.
Okay, thank you.
They might, you know, if they were pressed, they might, but they didn't offer that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Portman?
I'm just curious as to, and just a brief explanation would be good, but why are these accounting software programs so expensive?
Well, they're really complex with all the different departments that have to be integrated together and it takes a lot of support and of course, they have to keep them upgraded for payroll and other issues. And that's the only explanation that I can give you is just, and, and these people that write these things are fairly well-paid and so, of course, once they get it, once they get, get a program put together, you know, then it's a matter of upgrading it. But anyway, so they're trying to recover their costs over a period of years.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. DeVito, if you think this is expensive, try and buy one for a hospital. Millions.
I think it just appears to be a captive audience sort of thing.
Well, it is. And the, the one that you see here that's, that's not so terribly expensive and looking at it, it's, it appears to be a modification of a QuickBooks program, of which I could take a QuickBooks program, one of the premium versions or something like that, and I could modify it to do most everything that we need to do here in the city. But it would take me a while to do it and of course, you wouldn't have the utility billing integrated with it. It would be a standalone like it is now, so. So, I mean, there are other, there are some, some options, but then again, you know, it's kind of give what you pay for one of those things.
Lonnie, the package B, how many cities is that installed in right now? Did you say the last time, 500?
Uh, at the time that I asked the question, they said about 500. And since we talked at the last council meeting, there've been, I believe, four or five other cities that have gone with them.
Okay, thank you.
And City of Hot Springs is looking at them as we, as we speak.
Anyone else? Okay. We retain the motion down to number...
So moved.
Move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
2nd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You will stand by.
We can actually give this one 2177. I know the last one was still in 78.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of competitive bidding for the purchase of accounting computer software, whereas the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, city, is desiring to purchase computer software to be used for the purposes of financial accounting for the city and, whereas the city's director of finance, Lonnie Clark, has reviewed four software packages which are designed for use by governmental entities for purposes of financial accounting and has chosen the software package designed by BSNA Software to be the most desirable for the city's needs and, whereas the city believes that to advertise for bids on a financial software package would not prove feasible or practical due to the unique nature of such software and the scarcity of suppliers in the state of Arkansas in the United States, and that it is beneficial to the city to allow the finance director to use his professional expertise and opinion to choose the software which would best serve the interest of the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, one, that pursuant to the provisions of section 3.04.02 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, the council of said city finds that this being an exceptional situation in which the procedure for competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, does therefore waive the requirements of competitive bidding as to allow, so as to allow, the director of finance to purchase the financial accounting software package designed by BSNA Software at a purchase price of $107,016. This sum will be paid in three equal annual payments of $35,672 with no interest being charged. This purchase price includes software modules for general ledger, accounts payable, cash, cash receiving, payroll, human resources, employee self-service, timesheets, fixed assets, purchase orders, miscellaneous receivables, building department, business license and utility billing. This purchase price also includes the cost of data conversion, custom import, implementation and project management, software setup, onsite implementation, training and travel expenses. Unlimited service and support during the first year with the program is also included in the purchase price. The annual service after the first year for the modules included is $9,500. The annual service fee cannot increase in any one year by more than the yearly consumer price index, CPI. Two, that all ordinances or resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. That each of the provisions in this ordinance are severable and the decision of any court having jurisdiction as to the validity of any provision shall not affect the remaining provisions.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2177 on first reading.
2nd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, first read. Is that a only? Mr. McLun, sorry.
What's the resolution for?
The resolution is, this is to waive the competitive bidding, what you just, what you just read. The resolution is...
Is for the actual purchase.
Actual purchase.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need to pass this now or upon the third reading?
There's no emergency clause in it, so it'll take, unless you, Mr. Weaver's a creator, unless you suspend the rules all three times.
You won't pass the, I think if I understand your question correctly, you did not pass the resolution until you approved the other...
Okay. Okay. So this, we just hold on to this till the appropriate time?
Yes, sir. Understand?
Did we want to do a second reading tonight with no emergency clause for the third or what?
We can go ahead and do it the second time if you would like and then do the third reading at the next council meeting or just do it in the third council meeting.
third reading at the next council meeting, or just do it in the third council meeting.
Well, it's gonna take a while for this to be implemented, right? So the sooner we get things done, the better?
That's right. Right now, for instance, we're looking at probably a June implementation date, and it's gonna be a couple, three months, and fully implementing.
Okay, can we do a second reading with no emergency clause? I don't remember.
Absolutely, yeah. You suspend the rules, sir.
Lonnie, when are the servers, the new servers gonna be put in? Before the implementation? Will they be installed? Thank you, okay.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2177 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Now discussion.
Any further? Okay, go ahead and do the second read.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
Joyce Eller?
Yes.
Nikki Schneider?
Yes.
James DeVito?
Yes.
Dee Perkypile?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yeah.
6-0.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance 2177, and ordinance waiving the requirement of competitive bidding for the purchase of accounting computer software.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2177 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second read. Okay, thank you. All right, moves us on to number seven, Discussion on Ordinance 2175, Cemetery Electronic Fund Transfer, be the second read. Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2175 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Joyce Eller?
Ah, yes.
James DeVito?
Yes.
Dee Perkypile?
Yes.
Nikki Schneider?
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
James DeVito?
I don't get to vote twice.
Oh.
I'd like to.
How about Terry McLung?
Yes, certainly.
6-0.
Move to approve ordinance number 2175 on its second reading.
Second. Yeah, we gotta, we gotta beckon the suspension of vote on that.
Oh, you didn't read it.
Not yet.
Yeah.
That's what you get for voting twice. Ordinance 2175, and ordinance allowing the Cemetery Commission of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, pay water and electric by bank draft.
Mr. Weaver, you got a question?
All right, now? Now.
Move to approve ordinance number 2175 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Prove the second read. Thank you very much. All right. Brings us to number eight, Ordinance 2176, Parks Tax, motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open. Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2176 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Dee Perkypile?
Yes.
James DeVito?
Yes.
Joyce Eller?
Yes.
Nikki Schneider?
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
6-0.
Discussion.
Ordinance 21, number 2176, and ordinance to levy a 1/8 of 1% sales and use tax in the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for a period of four years to be used by the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission, exclusively for and to improve and maintain Lake Leatherwood City Park in accordance with the approved Lake Leatherwood City Park master plan, and prescribing other matters thereto.
Okay, Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2176 on its second read.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Yes, sir.
Take a 10-minute recess.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 10 minutes.
Got through the old business, that's pretty good.